I'd like to now call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Smith, if you could let people know how they can attend remotely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can use Zoom to raise your hand, or if you call in, simply press star nine on your phone, and we'll be glad to pick it up. Thank you.
Okay, before we get started, a few introductions to my far left, Mr. David Williams from District One. Immediately next to him, Mr. Tom Berry, representing District Two. Immediately next to him, Mr. Ned Snither, our county administrator, myself, Karen Carmack, representing District Five. To my immediate right, Mr. Mike Byerly, representing District Three. Next to him, Mr. Bill Cox, representing District Four. And last, our county attorney, Tom Latchney. If you could please stand, Mr. Byerly, if you could lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Williams, if you could lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman of all, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan, and all the many blessings we enjoy. Amen.
Any requests to postpone or amend the agenda? If not, I move we approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second? Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. County Administrator updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. If I could ask Mr. Kurt Nellis and the Emergency Management Team to please come up to the podium, I sure appreciate it, Kurt. Tonight, Proclamation P dash 2021 dash 38 recognizes the efforts of Powhatan's Emergency Management Team, which is led by our own Kurt Nellis, and our Emergency Service Solutions Team, a private sector, a great Powhatan local business, a key player in all their vaccination clinics. Together, Kurt and Emergency Services Solutions did a great job on our clinics. Powhatan was able to run a series of vaccination clinics for our first responders and for our citizens. As a thank you from my Board of Supervisors, Kurt, Chair Karen Carmack would like to read a resolution.
Whereas Kurt Nellis and ESS Incorporated partnered to establish nineteen COVID-19 vaccination clinics at Pocahontas Landmark Center and other locations in Powhatan County. And whereas Kurt Nellis and ESS IMC provided over eight thousand COVID-19 vaccinations for Powhatan County, and whereas, under the leadership and guidance of Kurt Nellis and ESS, the clinics operated in an efficient manner to provide the opportunity for citizens, Powhatan County Administration, Powhatan County Public School Employees, and Blessed Sacrament Huguenot Employees to be vaccinated. And whereas, Powhatan County, under the direction of Kurt Nellis and ESS, protected the lives of employees and citizens in our community by providing free vaccinations within Powhatan County. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors does hereby express its sincere appreciation of Mr. Kurt Nellis, ESS, and all the employees and volunteers for their dedication and attention to the details of the COVID-19 clinics. Thank you, Kurt. And we'd like to get a picture with you.
Thank you, Kurt. I'm Chair, I'd like to say a few words.
Yes, sir.
Everybody remembers back in March of that year when the COVID hit. I was chairman that year, and the degree of cooperation that we experienced in the county was just outstanding. At the nexus, at the head of that cooperation, that effort, was Kurt. There wasn't a day that went by that I didn't call him at least once, sometimes twice, because we didn't know where this thing was going. Kurt always answered. Even on weekends, he was always there at work. So again, I'd just like to reiterate what we did tonight in recognition, and congratulate him for what he did for the citizens of this county. Thank you again, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As a surprise resolution tonight, another staff member has recently been honored for excellence in serving the citizens of Powhatan County. Mr. Brett Shardine, if you don't mind, if you could come to the podium. Surprise, Brett.
Well, surprise.
Recently, at the annual meeting of Virginia Local Government Managers Association, our own Brett Shardine was presented with a distinguished award, the 2021 Marsha Mashaw Outstanding Assistant County Administrator Award. As we all know, Brett is a key part of our operations here in Powhatan, and the Board of Supervisors wanted to take this opportunity to present Proclamation P dash 2021 dash nine to Brett Shardine. Ms. Carmack, if you don't mind, if you could read the proclamation.
Whereas Brett Shardine was nominated for the 2021 Marsha Mashaw Outstanding Assistant Award with the Virginia Local Government Management Association for his tremendous leadership and effort during his appointment as interim county administrator. And whereas, the Marsha Mashaw Outstanding Assistant Award is presented to a deputy or assistant manager or administrator who is a member of the LGMA and who has demonstrated outstanding performance, particularly with a special project or during a period of unique conditions and circumstances. And whereas, during 2020's pandemic and beyond, Mr. Shardine displayed skills of a natural leader which lead the county in the right direction with stability and growth. And whereas, Mr. Shardine's expert guidance and calm demeanor reassured staff, elected officials, and citizens during a time of uncertainty. And whereas, the award was presented to Mr. Shardine during the summer LGMA conference, and now, therefore, it be proclaimed, the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors does hereby express its appreciation and commends Mr. Brett Shardine's performance, and joins the LGMA in its recognition of Mr. Shardine's leadership and efforts to be awarded in the 2021 Marsha Mashaw Outstanding Assistant Award. Thank you, Brett.
I'm Chair, if I may, again, I would like to... Man, Brett, after he finishes his photo op. Brett, as y'all remember, he was our Antrim County Administrator. He took the job in January. Little did he know that a pandemic would be upon us in a short number of months. Brett had to guide us, not only as Antrim, that's a tough enough job, but then you have a worldwide pandemic thrown in, and then we were trying to recruit new leadership in the county. He had a lot of balls in the fire. And he performed, and he got us through it. So I want to publicly recognize him for all of his efforts. Thank you, sir.
Next update, Mr. Smith?
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. As part of the board's continued effort to address broadband, needs of broadband, expanded service in the county, excuse me, we thought it would be good, a good time to provide you with an update. As you both know, as y'all know, the federal government and the Commonwealth of Virginia have made significant funds available to Virginia, and our multi-year plan to partner with Firefly for broadband coverage continues to get closer to reality. I would like to invite Mr. Gary Wood tonight to speak with us and give you an update on our efforts to move forward into the next wave of broadband. Thank you, Gary.
Welcome, Gary. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to give you an update on what we're doing this summer, and tell you that I'll be back at the end of August with a firm plan and some requests as far as funding and those types of things. I think that we... Let me start. Melissa Gay, our Communications Manager from CVC, who also works with Fireflies with me tonight. Did we send a presentation? All right. Or I'll just wing it. So I forgot my umbrella tonight, so I apologize if I look wet, because I am.
It's a little wet out there.
That's okay. If you need rain like we do back at home, it's a good sign. All right. Very good. We can go to the first slide. This is our, we've just given the project a name, the Regional Internet Service Expansion Project RISE. You're familiar with Firefly. I'm not going to go through all of these slides. You're welcome to look at them. They'll be available to you. We are a growing company. We're headquartered in Palmyra, and we'll have 10,000 very soon, maybe before Labor Day, 10,000 subscribers. That comes from five on January 1st, 2018. So we're growing pretty fast. We're planning on picking up speed. This is a look at the entire RISE project. It covers parts of 12 counties. The orange look, color on here is the new area that we will be looking to serve. It includes every unserved location in all 12 of those counties. The green area is what CVEC, our parent company, serves. And they have been building fiber and will be finished next year mid-year. That's about 4,000 miles of fiber total in the green areas. To cover the unserved part of the orange areas is about 3,000 miles, and we intend to finish that in about three years. So let's take the next slide. This is Powhatan, and this is what we've gotten so far. The blue area is the unserved, and we know that it's not perfect yet. We've been working on it, adding, tweaking, updating. These are the areas that we have identified as unserved. It's the bright blue. You see a little bit of the light blue that's kind of the water bodies also in there. But, so that throws you off a little bit. But we are putting together plans to get to each one of these areas and serve it. We're also trying to identify if there are any other unserved areas, and to make sure all of these areas are unserved. And we're doing that with a combination of field visits to look for any cable or anything that indicates fiber in the area. We're also asking the residents to help a little bit, and we'll talk about that on a future slide. But that's what it looks like right now. Next slide. In Powhatan, the partners are us and you. Sometimes, actually, Dominion may come in and part of that a little bit. We've got different partners in different counties, but here, it's going to be mostly Firefly in the county. We come from an electric background, so we look at the service areas in terms of who we would be building on for their facilities. Dominion and Southside, two electric providers in Powhatan, Dominion has the largest number of total accounts. Southside probably has the larger surface area, because they have the really rural areas. Most of these unserved locations are on Southside. There are a few pockets that are in the Dominion area, but we can build with both. On Southside, Firefly will own all the fiber and just build out an area. For the Dominion area, we're using their middle mile program, where they build on their main lines and lease it to Firefly, and then we extend from there out to the homes and on laterals and side streets. So it's a combination of us and Dominion in the Dominion areas. We've identified, in those areas that you've seen, it's about 1,850 homes, a little less. Our initial calculations are about 140 miles of fiber construction. We'd start next year, finish by 2025. We're going to talk a little later about potential starting a little early, and we'd love to finish earlier. We're going to finish as fast as we can. The preliminary budget that we've come up with for Powhatans, about 10 million right now. Again, we'll come back with these tightened up a little bit at the end of August. And for body funds, we're looking at a request about two and a half, and local funds, 2.8. And one of the reasons that the local is a little higher here is we want to talk to the county about some things we can do to actually speed that deployment up, which would mean more underground construction, which is a little more expensive. But if the county's willing to help out some, we may be able to start as early as this year and then finish earlier as well. So that's why we first put that number up. Again, we'll refine these and be back to you at the end of the month. All right, next slide. Here's our schedule. In August, we'll be back asking for the board to make a decision, either in the project or not right now. But if you're in the project, you'll be committing to your share of the funding. That doesn't mean we need the funding right away. The funding actually flows as we build. So if we build a tenth of it, then we ask for a tenth of the funding. It's prorated over the construction period. The application for the state grant program is the 14th of September. That's why we need a resolution from you at the end of August, because I have to put that in with everything else as part of that application. In December, the state grant program will announce its awards. And then Dominion, if we're doing anything on the Dominion lines here, they have to file for approval from the State Corporation Commission for where they build. That's about a four to six month process, and they're planning on filing in January or February. So in the Dominion area, at least, that will be somewhat restrictive in terms of not being able to start earlier until they get their approval. Southside doesn't have that same issue. All right, so later in 2022, construction begins. Again, I'll talk in a little bit about the potential of starting that a little earlier here. Next slide. This is just to remind you, this is who we are. No introductory rates, no data caps, no slowdowns. Pretty competitive rates with $50 for 100 megabit service and 80 for gigabit speed. We have said that for this buildout, we will go 2,500 feet off of the main line to serve a residential business. If it's over 2,500 feet and you're low or moderate income, we're going to find a way that you don't have to pay anything, it's going to get you connected. That's a half mile. That should cover most who will need to have that access. And we only sell internet. All right, next slide. Here's how the residents can help. For anyone watching here online, if you are in an unserved area, if you know someone who is unserved, and particularly if you saw that map and you're not on it. We have a survey online at our website. It's a little short survey. It just gives us your address. If you have DSL, but it's not performing at 253, Alaska can do a speed test at the end, and then we can use that to justify you being unserved. Or if you have any other type of wireless service or those types of things. If you just don't have any service except satellite or cellphone, then we need your address mainly. We don't need you to do a speed test, because if you're using cellphone or satellite, that doesn't count as being served. So we'd ask, and we're making some noise about it, to try to get people online. We're getting about 1,000 folks a week who are logging in across that area. That's pretty good. We've had some from Powhatan. We're going to do two town halls, and we're advertising this to a couple of media points and online, just to raise the awareness of the need to make sure your home or business is in our list if you are unserved. Those town halls, we'll talk a little bit about the project, and mainly, we'll encourage people to make sure that we know that they're unserved. We're not going to sell this list to anybody. We're not going to do anything with it other than build our case to go to the grant folks and say, these people are unserved. And particularly those little pockets that take a little bit to build into, we want to catch them now because there is funding available to help offset some of that cost. It's really a one-time opportunity, we think, because of the level of funding that the federal government has put out, and that the state, most recently, with the increase up to 700 million more for rural broadband. Now is the time to adjust those hard-to-get-to locations. And we're hoping to locate them, put them in our plan, and get them built. So that's where we are. Over the next month, we'll have some conversations with staff about the potential, and it doesn't have to be next month. We can go on with those conversations. But if the board is interested, and if the county wants to look at a plan that would speed up deployment a little bit, it may, again, cost a little more. Underground costs a little more than overhead, but that would allow us to get in a little earlier, get started, and then we'll get finished a little earlier. So we'll talk to the staff about that, and we'll include some of that discussion next time. We're really going to want to talk about the big picture and the entire project next time, what the funding level would be. And we'll be glad to take questions tonight about anything. That's just where we are.
Thank you, Gary. One thing I'd like to add, I would definitely like to work with you, and I'm sure some of my colleagues, about getting that out to citizens for them to fill out that survey. So whatever we can do, we'll definitely be happy to participate. Look forward, I personally am looking very forward to the discussion of how we can get this expedited.
All right, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wood, your survey, I've taken it. For the citizens, it's very simple. It's very easy to do. I have a DSL line, and I'm getting less than one megabyte down and less than one megabyte up. Okay? That's the level at which you can expect your existing. So this, I mean, it's no served, not underserved. Thank you. But your survey worked very easy.
Very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, tomorrow morning, we're planning on updating our website with a press release. It talks more about this site for signup purposes and a little bit about the town halls.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be, and I'm going to expect to get these numbers tonight, but I want to be looking forward to what the county's contribution is going to be looking like, and where do we anticipate if getting any grant monies, you know, for example, through the state grant, and if there's any offset to the grant monies, you know, what does it look like to us, you know, in the county? So that's not a question tonight. That's something we can talk about later.
No one else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Smith?
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. As the housing market continues to heat up, the board has already invested in a few areas to improve turnaround time on building permits, including the permit center and a new staff member and the permitting area. In addition, in an additional effort to reduce the turnaround times on new residential construction, staff is presenting to the board a concept of utilizing approved outside engineering firms to help us with plan review during high-volume permit periods. If approved, a credit or building permit fee reduction would be applied to any permit that utilizes an approved third-party engineer for plan review. The builders could choose, could still choose to utilize county staff at any time they prefer. If the new construction market slows down, we simply would remove the credit as an option and handle the plan reviews internally as we have in the past. To move forward, the proposed credit would need to be added to our approved fee schedule via a public hearing and a code amendment, and that would occur in August. Mr. Latchney, I don't think we need a formal motion tonight, but I would love an indication if you like the concept, that will give us a green light to start working on the public hearing for next month, if you think the concept works.
Thank you. Any dialogue?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, I have, the concept to me is very interesting. I have two things that I'm really interested in. One is metrics, the cost. What is the upside and what is the downside? We know how many permits we're doing, so we know the potential. But I'd like to have some numbers that tell me what I'm dealing with. And if we're going into a third-party program, I would also like to have some type of quality control system set in, whether it's random sampling or whatever, so that we know that the customers of this county are getting the proper service. Okay, so those, the quality control and what's it going to cost us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members like to weigh in? I personally think it's a great idea. I would like to see, I mean, I had some, you know, issues with constituents calling with the delay, so I think this could be a good solution.
And if things slow down, we can just turn off the spigot and start doing the way we were doing it. But we need to get turnaround times at approved levels.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Thank you. Lastly, introduction of new staff.
Thank you. We've started this tradition, I say tradition, because it's only been going on over the past few months, we're trying to introduce the board to new staff members. And tonight, we've had six staff members here with us to introduce, and we're very excited to have them on our team. And they come to you with a mission of customer service. So if you don't mind, the team, if the six new staff members that are here tonight, we'll start with Holly Toll, the new administrative assistant in my office. Holly, if you could stand up. And she'll be your best friend here for a long time, so as far as getting stuff through my office. Holly, thank you and welcome. Our IT department's been enhanced recently with Logan Simmons. Logan, please stand. He'll be helping John Wood. He's already helped my office on two or three times as far as some items. He hit the ground running, so Logan, thank you and welcome. A new planning director, Frank Hopkins, is here tonight. Frank, Frank started on last Monday, so he's in day seven now. And Frank came to us from the city of Winchester, and we're excited to have him learning our ways here in Powhatan. So Frank, thank you for coming tonight. A new parks and rec technician. I know your board's been focused on parks and rec and the services we're offering there. Madison's here with us tonight, Madison Shelton. I think Madison, you were a ballplayer here in Powhatan not too long ago. We're glad to have you on the team and welcome. Our chief assessor is here tonight, Charles Evers. Where's Charles? Charles started on July 1st, so he's almost 30 days into learning Powhatan and assessment process, and we're looking forward to working with Charles, especially in the next year when we go to annual assessments. Charles, thank you. Jamie McDaniel with Social Services is here tonight. Where's Jamie? You started when? Oh, eight third? Man, you're a veteran now. Welcome, Jamie. Thanks for coming tonight. That's our introduction for new staff members. And again, thank you to everybody that showed up tonight for us, the six staff members.
Absolutely. Now, on behalf of the board, we'd like to welcome you all. Moving on now to our first public comment period, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your full name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, or five minutes if you're speaking for a group. And if you guys could please line up to save on time, that would be great. Let's get started.
Hello, my name's Rebecca Courtwright. I live at 3033 Millmount Lane. First off, I wanted to say that I'm thrilled to see Kurt was honored here tonight. I had the honor of volunteering with Kurt at the vaccination clinics, and he's truly one of the best in Powhatan. We should truly be lucky to have him. It's ridiculous to me that at the same meeting, we are wasting time with the nonsensical medical freedom proclamation that directs Powhatan employees, including law enforcement, to not uphold laws regarding vaccines laws that don't even exist. I wonder, is this another ploy by Mike Byerly to advance his conservative radio appearances? By the way, Mike Byerly has asked this board repeatedly to look into what schools are spending on programs he doesn't like. He's also repeatedly accused the school board of a lack of transparency. So why is it that the meeting minutes from Board of Supervisor meetings have not been made public in months? Here's another question. How much money have we spent on extra security at our public meetings because of his inflammatory rhetoric? How many open cases of harassment and intimidation are the sheriffs dealing with because of the pot stirring he has done? How many extra hours have public employees had to work responding to witch hunting FOIA requests? Why are every Board of Supervisor and school board meetings taken over with accusations of teachers teaching a college-level theory our administration has said we are not? How many teachers and administrators are we going to lose before we realize Mike Byerly is using his elected position to fan the flames of divisive politics instead of focusing on Powhatan issues, instead of focusing on real solutions that could help our county residents? One last thing. Mike Byerly previously stated we should ban CRT like Chesterfield County. I did some research and discovered this is a lie. Chesterfield has not banned CRT. They only issued a statement saying they're not teaching it, a similar statement made by Dr. Jones. So I really want to know, how long does this go on? How far do we push this? I really do want to know. How much money do we waste just so one board member can get attention for his divisive politics? I say enough is enough.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Bob Kelly, 2572 Walkers Ridge Terrace. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. Teaching is not just a job, it is a calling. Just as folks are called to the priesthood, men and women know from early age that they want to teach. They turn down higher paying jobs, turn down higher paying jobs to teach. They pay for school supplies out of their own pockets. Because they're called to teach, they do things that you or I never could. I fully support the Powhatan County Public School Teachers and Administration. They've been our kids' heroes throughout the COVID pandemic, and we should always have their backs. Unfortunately, our teachers have become collateral damage in a culture war that they never signed up for. They've been unfairly and falsely accused of lying and indoctrinating our children. Local Facebook forums encourage followers to comb social media for any dirt on educators. These forums have recruited teams to obtain public school information utilizing the Freedom of Information Act. Last week, a local Facebook forum utilizing FOIA obtained information published an unredacted email from a teacher to the school superintendent. Not only did this posting contain the teacher's name, it included his email address and his photo. This is chilling as it exposes this teacher and his family to threats and intimidation for merely doing his job. At the last joint board of supervisors, school board meeting, the supervisor mentioned that he believed that there was a cancer in the school system. I agree, there is indeed a disease running rampant in Powhatan, but it's not cancer. We have been exposed to a virus that was intentionally injected into the county's bloodstream by national dark money organization, No Left Turn in Education, with the booster shot provided by white, right wing advocacy group, the Federalist. Please support our educators as they follow their calling and share their wisdom with the next generation. Don't surrender your basic human decency and fairness to these national organizations. They will be gone as soon as their political goals are accomplished. And I pray that our teachers continue to show the patience and strength that they have shown over the past year. I beg with them, please don't leave. Prayerfully, you can get back to what you do best real soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Terry Stratton, 2940 Lake Louise Drive. There is a saying in Weight Watchers called the five pounds of acceptance. You realize you've gained weight and say it's just five pounds and you accept that. It happens again. Oh, it's just five pounds and you accept that too. And before you know it, it's 50 pounds and you wonder how you got there. I mean, it was just five pounds, right? This is an example of what is slowly happening with our rights and freedoms over the last 16 months. It's just two weeks to slow the spread. It's just 30 more days to flatten the curve. It's just six feet for social distancing. It's just telling you if your business can be open. It's just telling you if you can go to work. It's just keeping your kids out of school. It's just a PCR test. It's just a curfew. It's just telling you where you can and can't go. It's just not seeing grandma or any other family member that doesn't live with you. It's just one Thanksgiving. It's just one Christmas. It's just a birthday. It's just a mask. It's just an elective surgery you can't have. It's just a non FDA approved experimental emergency use vaccine. It's just a vaccine passport. It's just a third booster. It's just another variant. It's just the COVID Nazis going door to door. It's just to keep you safe. It's just to protect you. It's just about time we all stood up and said no more and never ever again. Our government has been overstepping.
Please keep your applause to a minimum. Hey, guys, you burn into her time when you applaud. Keep it to a minimum.
Our government has been overstepping and overreaching for far too long. And too many have just so willingly handed over their freedoms and God given rights and accepted it. All over a virus with a 99 point X percent survival rate, depending on your age, with therapeutics that cure it. I am so happy to see that medical freedom is on the agenda tonight. If we let our government continue to have this much power during an emergency, they will continue to create emergencies to keep this much power. This vaccine propaganda and coercion being pushed on all of us and the talk of vaccine passports and Biden's door knockers have crossed a line. They are a violation of my rights under the Nuremberg Code and my rights under the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I know all of you swore an oath to both the US Constitution and the Virginia Constitution. Let's be leaders and not followers. I'm asking you to please vote yes tonight and help protect our individual rights because none of us know what the next it's just thing will be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Dee Strickland. I live at 2921 Deer Creek Trail, Powhatan. Good evening. What is medical freedom? Medical freedom is the right to choose the care one receives for their own body. Medical freedom is simply a basic human right. A right which grants each individual sovereignty and authority over their own body. Our medical freedom is being threatened by an overreaching government. The First Amendment and informed medical choice have been undermined in an effort to push unnecessary government mandates on all of our citizens. The recent announcement from the Biden administration that they will launch a targeted community door to door outreach to get remaining Americans vaccinated is alarming to those of us that value our freedom to make our own choices about the experimental COVID-19 vaccine. After hearing this announcement, I went on Amazon to purchase no trespassing signs. To my surprise, most of them were sold out. It seems many citizens share the same concerns to keep unwanted bureaucrats off their properties. We reserve, we reserve the right to determine what is in our own best interest without government mandates to take on experimental or investigational medication. It's time we, the people, not government bureaucrats, take a stand and keep our county free of medical tyranny. We are asking all of you to reaffirm your oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States as well as your mission statement to provide excellent public services in an efficient, effective and accountable manner and to defend the rights and freedoms of our citizens. Does that mean you defend the rights and freedoms of only vaccinated citizens? No. You have to have, you have an obligation to uphold the Constitution and its rights for all of our citizens. We ask that you approve the resolution as it is written, which supports our constitutional rights to medical freedom and our right to decline this vaccine should it become mandated. You have an obligation to do the right thing and pass this resolution as it is written. Do the right thing and vote yes. Do not encourage an overreaching government.
Members of the board, good evening. Don Silverbauer, 1426 Donovan Mill Lane, Powhatan, Virginia. I am speaking on behalf of two groups this evening, but I don't want 10 minutes. Five will be fine. Both Powhatan Citizens Alliance and Powhatan Home Defense. I'd like to address the medical freedom resolution, if I may. The leadership of Powhatan County has a decision to make. A decision that is an opportunity to make Powhatan a leading county in the fight to preserve the rights of its citizens irrespective of political party, race, gender, affluence, or lack thereof. As such, I urge you to adopt the resolution on the following grounds. Our nation is under attack, both from within and from without. Citizens are afraid. They're afraid that their government is not acting in their best, best interest. Evidence the destruction of our cities, the open southern border, the out of control misappropriation of our tax money, the selective enforcement of laws, unchecked violence, and so much more. Evidence the flight of citizens from cities to counties, both within and out of the state in which they are living, believing that it is a sanctuary for their families. Powhatan County leadership has in the past not demonstrated the best leadership qualities in the fight to protect its citizens. Evidence a watered down version of the Second Amendment resolution last year. Two versions were presented and the chosen one had removed the section dealing with zero funding of the enforcement of orders that violated our founding laws and principles. Evidence also this year's hotly contested school curriculum and the issue of critical race theory. County leadership could have been more vocal and proactive at the outset in supporting Mr. Byerly in denouncing this destructive curriculum, but did nothing. This board also approved $2 million in the school budget that could have been denied. It would not have had an impact on the education of K-12 as a like amount is provided by the federal government, therefore granting more tax money than actually requested by the schools. In light of this history, let me also suggest that the issues we currently face, like critical race theory and forced vaccinations, just scratches the surface of what is to come, unless the stake is driven to protect our rights. What will Powhatan leadership do when the federal government takes over local zoning of county property? Or when federal authority oversees local law enforcement? Both of these actions are currently under discussion and consideration at the federal level. I will state for the record that you have done an admirable job at the supervising, the traditional county business. But now we are faced, now we face outside influence that requires broader thinking and action. At this point in time, given that history suggests Powhatan leadership has not led the fight to protect our rights, will you now be leaders we voted for and deserve? Again, I ask that you pass this important resolution and send the message that Powhatan will not allow government overreach to ignore the rights of its citizens enumerated in all laws. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Judd Stevenson. I live on Rocky Ford Road. I'm nervous, I've never done this before. But first God, then country, then county. I'd like to pray for y'all. Lord God, Jesus, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Thank you for giving an opportunity for your spirit to fall on us, for your spirit of wisdom, for your spirit of love and your spirit of freedom to bless us. Lord, I ask that you move in every one of these people's lives, especially mine. Give me your words, Lord. I love you, Lord. Many people in this room love you. Help us to honor you tonight in Jesus's name. Amen. I'm here to support, I can't remember the name of it, but Mr. Byerly's Freedom of Choice for Mandated Vaccines. Y'all represent a conservative religious county. And the conservative religious vote wants to be represented with freedom of choice. I hope that y'all honor that. Mr. Cox, my vote for you will depend on, on, on your vote here. There is little you can do to regain my vote if you vote against this. And there's little you can do to lose my vote if you vote for it. I ask for common sense. I ask for people with penises to stay out of girls locker rooms. I ask for people with vaginas to stay out of boys locker rooms. Common sense. This is a county of common sense. Ladies and gentlemen, please represent it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm speaking on behalf of the group, Sarah Cook, 22.
I need the name of the group.
Paradigm Shift.
Okay.
Sarah Cook, 2221 Autumn Oaks Lane, Powhatan, Virginia. Have you want to start the time?
It's on.
Okay. As I've said before, this is an attack against our mind, body and spirit. And this is not only an attack within our schools, but it is an attack beyond our schools and within each of our everyday lives. And I look at each of you who have been elected to represent us and serve us as servant leaders. And I have identified three members on each board who are true servant leaders. I have also identified conflicts of interest, the appearance of a conflict of interest, and gaslighting and fallacies that are spoken in the ill effort to go out and know your community. And therefore you do not speak. That is not representing who Powhatan is. It is not representing our conservative values to choose not to get to know your constituents and choose not to speak on behalf of your constituents, as that is your job. And I am so incredibly thankful for a little boy, a young man, I'll say, he's almost 13, who came into my life at the perfect time. He started sharing a story with me about cavemen and how they would like hang these children on the edge of a cliff and see how they would, if they could survive. And like we think about that and that, that sounds insane. It's barbaric. The fact that we are continuing these conversations, the fact that we're talking about medical freedom, the fact that we're still talking about CRT, the fact that we're talking about our fifth First Amendment, this is barbaric. I thank Mr. Byerly for bringing the conversation up and continuing to stand. And I thank many of you to deny the fact that there is a problem and a cancer in our community. We would be lying to ourselves. I can identify the library, the little books at the park where books are put in. You don't even want to know what I have found. It's disgusting. And let me remind you what I told you all last night and this morning. We are now looking at an issue when developers come in, they have to pay proffers for attributable impacts, which includes schools, libraries, parks. So are we going to evaluate the allocation of funding? Because you all, some, have tried to pretend, Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Berry, sorry, I forgot your name. You've tried to pretend that the budget doesn't matter and doesn't have implications, but we know that it does. Do not give me that look. I have the email. And I'm happy to share it. I have been silenced on Nextdoor by moderators within our community. It has been barbaric to try and get the FOIA request that I have paid $1,200 for. This is insane. As I said before, President Biden said that we yield our rights to the government. Again, I tell you, we do not. We will not. We will stand. As Ben Carson said, as Ben Carson said, this is a war from within. And it is time as leaders that you go home and you reflect. You either step in or step out. I'm done having this conversation and wasting my breath. And in that, I am moving towards introducing the Hope Foundation for a paradigm shift within our community and beyond. In that, I hope that you all will see that I have the best interests of our community in mind. And this is an opportunity to pay it forward. And when you go home, I ask that you listen to Amy Grant's My Grown Up Christmas List and ask yourself, is, can we agree there? There's one school board member who we fought. We had so much in disagreement. And today I call that person a friend and a friend for life. Can we not come together?
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Jack Mon Anderson, 3342 Pineacre Drive. I'm here in support of the First Amendment and Medical Freedom Resolution that you will be voting on later this evening. The majority of citizens in Powhatan County believe strongly in individual freedom and personal responsibility. We want to make our medical decisions after careful consultation with healthcare providers. We do not want these decisions to be dictated to political appoint, or dictated by political appointees working for the CDC or the VDH. We also need to be able to recruit excellent candidates to work for Powhatan County. And this resolution will let potential employees know that their personal rights will be respected while working for us. The mission of the Powhatan County Government, according to the strategic plan adopted earlier this year, is quote, "to provide excellent public services in an efficient, effective, accountable manner and to defend the rights and freedoms of our citizens," end quote. It is your duty as an elected official to uphold It is your duty as an elected official to uphold this mission by voting yes to the First Amendment and Medical Freedom Resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Eleanor Hertzler. I'm at 3499 Richards Run. I'm here this evening in support of the Medical Freedom Resolution that is being presented this evening. This resolution supports that we should have a choice, especially on the vaccination. This should not be mandated by the government. We should all have a choice in, in what healthcare decisions that we want. Part of the board's mission statement states that you will defend the rights and freedoms of our citizens. Each and every one of you, I believe, was a part of putting that mission statement together, and we are entrusting that you will come together and vote on this as it is and protect the citizens of Powhatan County. On a side note, I would like to thank Mike Byerly. I'm sorry that you went under such harsh words because all of you have a very hard job to do. It's not easy, and I think the entire board. But Mike, you specifically represent not only the, the citizens of District Three, but I think the majority of this county. So thank you for your service.
Hello, I'm Freddie Cumbey. I reside at 4300 Steger Creek Drive, Powhatan. I'm here to support Mr. Byerly's resolution. And you know, I don't think it should be this difficult for you guys, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, to um, not understand this. I am a citizen of the United States of America who has a constitution that gives me every damn right that I have, and the government has stepped over its bounds. If a woman has the right to choose, so does Freddie Cumbey. That was done by the Supreme Court. It shouldn't be difficult for you ladies and gentlemen to come together on something this simple. We have rights. And we don't need, we don't need to hem and haw and hush. It's a straight up law, it's a straight up resolution. I ask all of you to pass this and support it, just as I did with you, Mr. Williams, Ms. Carmack, Mr. Byerly, and Mr. Cox. When y'all wanted to be reelected, I worked for all y'all, did I not? I know that's fact. I called you today, Mr. Cox, your voicemail's full. I called you today, Mr. Williams, and left you a message, and I didn't hear anything back. I expect transparency, and I expect y'all to follow what the people of this county want. And I guarantee, and with Mr. Berry, with all due respect, you shouldn't even be voting on it because you don't, I mean, you, you don't even know your cons, your constituents. You really don't. But I respect you, and I respect you both. But with this said, these people of this county are done. We are done. We're going to remember everything that's said, and we will remember everything that's done. And when time comes, we're going to stand. And I'm telling you, we're going to stand. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Joe Ordia from 3343 South Meadow Circle here in Powhatan. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of Mr. Byerly's Medical Freedom Resolution. As part of the strategic plan that this board passed, you guys identified as a priority protecting the rights of the citizens of Powhatan County. Well, I'll tell you, this is the fundamental civil rights issue of our generation. And I'll go so far to say that Mr. Byerly is a champion for civil rights in the county, and passing this resolution will be the largest victory we have for civil rights in Powhatan County this year. Now, we know that in America, we have a diverse community, including individuals that choose to express their religious liberty in many different ways and forms. Some people refuse to accept certain medical treatment. Some religions don't believe in organ transplant or blood transfusion, for example. Other Americans, including those here in Powhatan County, choose to express their religious liberty in their vaccination preference. I'm not here to argue whether it's right or wrong, whether someone should be vaccinated or not. If they want to have it available, it should be made available. But for those that choose to exercise their religious liberty in their vaccination preference, those individuals should not have their civil rights violated. And you can read the writing on the wall, because the mainstream fake news is already normalizing the social ostracization and making outcasts of people that choose to not be vaccinated or to defer a decision on their vaccination. And that's why passing this amendment, or sorry, passing this resolution is so important right now. You've heard them, the people of Powhatan have spoken. They want a medical freedom resolution, and they.
With your applause.
And they want a medical freedom resolution tonight. And I understand that there may be some concerns that the scope of this resolution is too narrow. Others might be concerned that the scope is too broad. But one way or the other, the people of Powhatan want a medical freedom resolution tonight. Now, there's no downside with this. We're not asking you to reallocate county funds or county resources away from one program towards a new program. What we're asking for is purely symbolic in nature, and others might criticize it for that, just being purely symbolic. But symbols are important, because the question that's before you is what message are you going to send to the people of Powhatan that put you on that board? On the one hand, you can send the message that most big government is sending, which is that we don't care what the people say. We have our marching orders, we have our donors, and we're going to do what we want to do, and y'all just put up with it. Or you can send them a message that your government is listening to you, because you can hear it and you can feel it. And the other speakers tonight, the people of America are fed up, fed up with a government that has been separated from them. And so that's why I'm calling on you, to have the courage to do the right thing. You all represent the people of Powhatan, the people of Powhatan have spoken on this issue.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm challenging you to have the courage to do the right thing on this resolution.
Mike Chris, 3801 Bent Arrow Drive, Powhatan, Virginia. I would encourage you to vote for this resolution. Every time I walk up here, I get red in the face, my voice gets a little louder. You know, I'm tired of that. I wasn't even going to comment on anything tonight. I was just going to come sit and watch. Until that woman got up here and started attacking Mr. And defending CRT. You know, she has an opinion. And she voiced it, and I respect that. I have one too. And I voiced mine, and it wouldn't be the first time y'all hear my voice. I can almost guarantee you it won't be the last. Mr. Cox, my supervisor, you and I talk from time to time. You know what's important to me? This issue is important to me. Mr. Byerly, Mr. Cox is lucky you don't live in my district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not going to sign in. It's just, I'm going to take up time, my three minutes to sign in. I'm Victoria Rono, 6430 Blenheim Road. Karen Carmack is my supervisor. I have worked with Karen for quite some time before she was elected, and I'm thankful for that. And Mike, I appreciate everything you've been doing. I think my one issue is that a resolution is an ask. We are asking the government to, oh, please, oh, please, let us pass this resolution so that we can live our lives the way we see fit. And I have a problem with that. I had a problem with 2A, because 2A is an ask. We have in our constitution something that no other constitution says. It says community, local, self-government. That means we can pass laws. Now, Tom Latchen, he won't, won't approve of that because his job is to protect the assets of the county. It is not to protect the people. Your job is to protect the people. And I am asking for not only this resolution to be passed, but for us to take it a step further. I started a page, and you two are aware of this page. It's Powhatan in the know, uncensored. Join it. A thousand people in three days join that page, and it's not about CRT, and it's not about this vaccine, it's about having the right to decide what we want in Powhatan as our community. We moved here because of the Powhatan people and the right to be free. And Mike, you represent everything about that. Bill, I have an issue. I campaigned for you, and you glared at me and said you will never pass an ordinance that frees the people. That's it. What is the deal with that? Your job is to represent the people in your district, and I can promise you, if you don't step up to the plate and start listening to your district, you won't be in that seat anymore. I will make sure of it. I will campaign door to door in your district, and you're not my district. This is passionate. This is passion for all of us. It doesn't matter the topic. It is about being free in Powhatan. That's why we moved here. That's why we live here. It's ranked 130th on the healthiest counties in the nation. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair and board members, my name is Robert Powers. I live at 2792 Spencer Wood Drive. And I come here before you tonight to express my full support for the First Amendment and Medical Freedom Resolution that Mr. Byerly has put forth. I greatly appreciate the resolution's reaffirmation of our First Amendment rights, especially as they pertain to religious liberty and everyone's God-given right to reject any laws or regulations forcing one to follow governmental edicts in violation of their constitutional rights. I applaud you all for doing so, despite the fact that much, much of what's voiced in this resolution should not be even open to question or debate. I don't understand that. Unfortunately, the times in which we live make it imperative to regularly restate and reaffirm all that's contained in our founding documents. Doing so is even more urgently required, because if we don't, our liberties will slowly be chipped away, diluted to the point that they're no longer in play. And once diminished, it will be very difficult, not impossible, to put our house back in order. So reiteration, repeating of our founding principles in a public way in a forum such as this is very, very necessary. And while I applaud and support the resolution, I want to take a moment to call your attention to a related area of concern that I have. I believe we must all be vigilant, do nothing that segregates our children in classrooms. The notion of having some masked and some not, some identified as vaccinated and others not, may well instill a sense of one group being better than the other, more responsible, and even to be seen in a negative light, to be feared or ridiculed as the masked and the unmasked are placed in separate areas of a classroom. Following the science is not optional. It's not to be ignored for the sake of convenience, out of fear, or as a method of exercising control. And most certainly, the facts our scientists produce must never be employed to advance a particular political position or ideology. From all I've read, the science tells us that vaccinating children is unnecessary. Nor have I found any double-blind studies supporting the efficacy of mask-wearing, no matter how many layers you might think are appropriate. So I simply ask you all to be mindful, mindful, if you would, of the long-term impact of differentiating between those children who are vaccinated versus those who are not, and certainly not to follow the guidelines being advanced by the VHD or any guidance offered by the teachers' unions that result in diminishment of our First Amendment rights. Mr. Byerly, thank you so much for the resolution, and I encourage all of you to vote for it in an unedited, as it's written. Thank you all very much, I appreciate the opportunity.
Good evening, Amanda Kozak, 3378 Manor Oaks Drive. You know, I'm here tonight in support of Mr. Byerly's resolution, and as you all know, I am a huge advocate and fan of our public library. I was actually there last week with my four-year-old, and as I was at the checkout line, there was another new book titled Dr. Fauci: How a Boy from Brooklyn Became America's Doctor by Kate Messner. Now, I'm not going to entertain you all with storytime tonight, but I did check this book out because I wanted to see what was in our library and what children potentially have the opportunity, opportunity to read. This definitive picture book biography of Dr. Fauci didn't seem entirely true. But that's for my own personal opinion. But as I got to the end, there is a page titled Are Vaccines Safe? And it states vaccines, like the ones developed for COVID-19, are very safe. So I thought, hmm, safe. Well, as of July 23rd, the CDC confirmed an increased number of deaths reported after a COVID-19 vaccination. Between December 14th, 2020, and July 19th, 2021, the Vaccine Adverse Reporting System received 6,207 reports of death among people who received a COVID-19 shot. If anything can result in death, citizens should not only have the right to informed consent, but also should have the freedom to decide if they want to receive that shot or not. Approving this resolution as written would be symbolic of upholding the Board of Supervisors' mission statement, which defends the rights and freedoms of citizens. Again, I'm not here to judge who gets the shot or not, I just don't want it forced on myself, my family, my children, or anyone else walking around Powhatan. I am going to share something personal with you all that may put things into perspective of where I'm coming from. In 2016, I almost lost my youngest son, that four-year-old who was at the library with me, to a respiratory virus called RSV. We spent two weeks in ICU at Chippenham Hospital, and when we were discharged, no one told me to shelter in place, no one told me to wear a mask, no one told me to social distance. There is still not a vaccine to protect against RSV. And I'm going to share a statistic with you, I just did a quick search tonight. In 2017, the World Health Organization estimated that RSV causes around 33 million serious respiratory infections a year that results in more than 3 million hospitalizations and nearly 60,000 deaths in children under five years of age every year. Right. It's shocking. And a lot of people don't know what RSV is, and I'm not here to be an advocate, but at the same time, I just want to put into perspective, that experience taught me, we don't choose how we die, we only choose how we live. And I and my children, we don't live in fear, and I want to live in control of my body, and my children have control of that as well.
Oh, don't worry about signing in right now. I'm sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Sarah Taylor, and I live at 2987 Huguenot Trail. I typically speak representing a group, but tonight I'm just going to speak for myself. I am a mom. I have two children, and I have one on the way. And being pregnant, I take the opportunity and thought process on whether or not to get vaccinated myself very seriously, as I'm not just deciding for myself, I'm deciding for a life that I'm growing. And I'm adopted, and I'm very strongly pro-life. One of the things that I find particularly disturbing about this shot is that Johnson &amp; Johnson's testing and final vaccine actually derives from the tissue of aborted fetus. Moderna and Pfizer created their preliminary vaccine from the tissue of aborted fetus, but not their final vaccine. So for someone that is pro-life like myself, you know, I think about that as an ingredient in the shot and go, I don't know if that's for me. When you go to the CDC website and you search, is this vaccine, you know, safe for people who are pregnant or want to have children? It says, I'll show you, it's from CDC website. Limited data is available about the safety of COVID-19 vaccines for people who are pregnant. Clinical trials that study the safety of COVID-19 vaccines and how well they work in pregnant people are underway or planned. On the same page, it says getting vaccinated is a personal choice. If you're pregnant, you can receive a COVID-19 vaccine, but you want to have that conversation with your healthcare provider to help you decide whether to receive a vaccine. to help you decide whether to receive a vaccine that has been authorized under emergency use authorization." Emergency use authorization. Okay. So this is not an FDA-approved vaccine. I think that we've heard a lot from the public, but that's a piece that I think we should remember is, you know, if this is going to be mandated and it's not even yet approved by the FDA, what are we, what are we mandating for people to put in their bodies? And how would you feel for someone like me or, you know, Amanda's family or any of the families here? We're unsure. And I think it's healthy to ask questions. I think it's okay to have conversations with your physician, but I don't think it's okay for the government to tell you what you can put into your body. So I ask you to consider that tonight and think about, you know, everyone's unique situation. And that for me, as a pregnant woman, the science isn't there. Straight on the CDC website, it says, "The studies are underway or will be coming, but there's no data." Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Ward. I'm at 1925 Hickory Shade Drive, Mosley, Virginia, Powhatan, of course. I'm here tonight to speak as not only a citizen of District 2 for a Board of Supervisor that has been appointed by the courts because our particular supervisor resigned due to the fact of a lot of front door, front porch, back door decisions that we're making. If the rest of the board did not agree with one or two or three conservative thought processes, decisions were already made and voted upon, knowing that that particular person's vote was not going to count anyways. You were appointed by the courts because our board couldn't come together and make a decision. That doesn't give us a whole lot of respect that you all have the power to make decisions that you should be making. Mr. Byerly has called for this medical resolution. I'm sure there's a lot of information in there that he has written. And a few of you all may want to change and alter because maybe you don't want him to have the credit for that. People are watching. The citizens of this county have been awoken. We are not backing down. We will, if you've been voted into that particular position, we will pay very close attention. And you will either not be re-elected or you could even be recalled. If you choose to continue to not act as the citizens of this county wish you to respond, those will have consequences. I am a registered nurse. I am speaking in regards to the medical resolution that individuals should have the right to choose what they put or have put into their body. No government institution should enforce that at all. Being that we are a conservative county, as someone said earlier, majority of the people here are very strong Christian-valued individuals. Those should be respected. I'd also like to just share another little quick personal thing, experiment, or I don't know, whatever. I'm getting nervous. I have a 22-year-old. When he was six weeks old, talking to his pediatrician to get his vaccines. Mrs. Carmack, your husband's a physician. Okay? I'm also mother-infant nurse for nine years, supported a lot of parents and moms getting vaccines for their children. My son, 22 years ago, received the new oral polio vaccine. Great. Nurses said it was wonderful. One last shot for your child. When I went back for his second dose, it was recalled. Now, that was an FDA-approved polio vaccine 22 years ago. This is under federal emergency use authorization. I don't even qualify it as a vaccine. It is a shot right now. You are and we are the experiment. So take into that. You're welcome to reach out to me for more questions if you'd like. But we, as citizens, are taking note. We expect a resolution and a vote tonight. If you put this off, we just know it's for other reasons. And thank you for your time.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephanie Sellers, 41303 Bridge Road. Hopefully, I'll be short and sweet. I just wanted to say, it's not this government's job to protect my health. It is the government's job to protect my rights, my constitutional rights. It's my job to look after my children, myself, my family, and to protect our health. I am telling you, I want you to approve this resolution as written. You are elected to represent and defend the rights and the freedoms of citizens of Powhatan County. I'd like to also add that I think what you're hearing today is a lot of people are dealing with the tyranny that is now the state of Virginia. I'm dealing, I hear, oh, they're not making you. No, they're coercing you. They're bullying you. You are not allowed to go to certain colleges. If this gets into our schools with our young children, we could be maiming permanently, disabling, killing future generations. We don't know. And her, it was great that she pulled some stats from April, but it's way higher than that now. The lady that spoke before me, Kim, I believe. The stats of death from this are phenomenally high. Way higher. I'll tell you another stat. The swine flu, 25 injuries, it got shut down. We're talking thousands. I think it's a 500,000 right now. Not 6,000. Not in America. This could be globally, this number. Got a lot of stuff going on up here. I've been studying this pretty well. So I think you should pass the resolution as written tonight. And then if you want to beef it up more, wonderful. But we do expect you all to work together for this community, not against each other, because we need you to stand with us because these are very difficult times. And we need to know that you stand for the freedoms of an American citizen. Thank you. Y'all have a nice evening.
Let's check Zoom.
Yes, Madam Chair. We do have one Zoom caller, phone number ending in 8764. If you would please move forward with your comments. Phone number ending in 8764.
Those on Zoom, can you hear?
You're muted now, so unmute and you'll be ready.
Hello?
Hi. Can you introduce your name and address?
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I'm from 1727 Teresa Lane. I would like to speak about the Watkins Center. Currently, currently, at this month's Planning Commission meeting in Chesfield County, they unanimously approved the construction of adding 2,000 homes to the Watkins Center off of Midlothian Turnpike. And they plan to add another stoplight to Route 60. And I think the Powhatan Board of Supervisors should formally ask Chesfield County, if they could have the developer pay for road improvements to Huguenot Springs Road, such as adding wide shoulders and removing the dead man's curves and adding a bike path to Huguenot Springs Road. They also need to ask the developer to replace the aging wooden bridge that currently carries traffic over Bernard Creek because 2,000 new homes and apartments is going to add a lot of traffic to Huguenot Springs Road and Route 60. And I think they need to be held to a higher standard than what they're currently going to do, where they're just going to build, where they're just going to widen the Route 60 in front of the existing development by the Watkins Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else?
No, thank you.
All right. Last call for here. And seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. And we need to move on to approve our consent agenda. Anyone have any comments, amendments, or anything? All right. Do I have a second? All those in favor, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now, moving on to new business, which is the First Amendment and Medical Freedom Resolution. Mr. Byerly, I believe you proposed this. If you would like to start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll be very brief and quick, other than reading this. First of all, thank you all for coming out this evening in support of this First Amendment Medical Resolution, Medical Freedom Resolution. It's pretty touching listening to what you all said. But to get to the point of it, I heard it endless times, Mike Byerly's resolution. Let me clear a couple of things for you up. It's not Mike Byerly's resolution. It's the people who've been calling me since January of this year, asking me to do this, to put forth it. And in the beginning, it included executive orders. And now, those have been removed and it's just pertaining to the Medical Freedom Resolution. So this didn't start recently. I was contacted by many constituents in January, all the way through for months. Why didn't I bring it through at that point? Mr. Nordvig resigned. I thought it was the best thing to wait. Another thing that I really want to clear up is when we did, a year ago tomorrow, this board approved the 2A resolution. And I went back today and was looking at that video. That video, Mr. Cox showed a slide. That slide stated, "A resolution is a formal expression of opinion or intention, and as such, is advisory in nature. It does not require any specific actions." This is not a law. This is not an ordinance. It is a resolution. It's a gesture. It's in support. It's this board saying, "We support this." It's not a law. And I think most all of you that I've heard speak understand, it's not a law. It's a gesture in kindness, in effort, in support of. I believe wholeheartedly that you have the right to decline the vaccination, should, should it ever be mandated. It's not mandated right now, but I'll tell you something else. I don't change the oil in my truck after the motor blows up either. Okay? Just letting you know. Powhatan can be a leader in this effort. I'll tell you what I mean when I say a leader. I've watched this board for a year and a half, called Chesterfield, Henrico, Goochlin, Hanover, and every other county around here to find out what they do before we decide what we do. I'm going to tell you, Russell County School Board voted recently against the Virginia Department of Education's transgender policy. They voted it down. They were willing to accept whatever responsibility the Commonwealth of Virginia wanted to bring forward. I don't know that they will or they won't, but I'm not going to operate based upon fear. It is not my resolution. It is not my county. It's our county. This is not my board. This is your board. I work for you. I listen to you. And your language is pretty clear to me with my high school education. First Amendment, First Amendment Medical Freedom Resolution. I'm going to try to read this. "Whereas the First Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, 'Congress shall make with no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof and to petition the government for a redress of grievances.' And whereas the Constitution of Virginia, Article 1, Section 1 states that all men are by nature equally free and independent and have certain inherent rights, of which, when they enter into a state of society, they cannot by any compact deprive or divest their posterity, namely the employment, enjoyment of life and liberty, with the means of acquiring and possessing property and pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety. And whereas the Constitution of Virginia, Article 1, Section 16 states that no man shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship, place, or ministry whatsoever, nor shall be enforced, restrained, molested, or burdened in his body or goods, nor shall otherwise suffer on account of his religious opinions or belief, but that all men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion, and that the same shall in no ways diminish, enlarge, or affect their civil capacities. And whereas the people of Powhatan County wish to maintain a state of religious liberty, especially as it pertains to an individual's acceptance of medical treatment, whereas the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors is committed to protecting its residents' rights pursuant to the Constitution of Virginia, Article 1, Section 2, which states that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people. That magistrates are their trustees in service and at all times amenable to them. And whereas the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its deepest commitment to the freedom enumerated in the Bill of Rights, including the rights of all citizens of Powhatan County to engage in commerce or the financial support of themselves and their families. And whereas the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors wishes to express opposition to any order or law that would unconstitutionally restrict the rights of the citizens of Powhatan County. And whereas the means within the power of Powhatan County supervisors includes the power to initiate legal action, the power to petition for redress of grievances, and the power to direct the employees of Powhatan County to not enforce any unconstitutional law or purported order. And whereas Powhatan County Board of Supervisors is concerned about the passage of any bill containing language which could be interpreted as infringing the rights of the citizens of Powhatan County to express their religious liberty and it pertains to, as it pertains to, vaccination preference and wishes to express its deepest or deep commitment to the rights of all citizens of Powhatan County to keep religious liberty intact. And whereas the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its support of the inalienable First Amendment rights of its citizens and to oppose within the limits of the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia any efforts to unconstitutionally restrict such rights and to use such legal means as at its disposal to protect the rights of the citizens of Powhatan County to protect religious liberty and exercise of, including through legal action, the power to appropriate public funds, the right to petition for redress of grievances, and the power to direct employees of Powhatan County to not enforce any unconstitutional law. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County, Virginia. The Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby declares Powhatan County, Virginia, as a supporter of the First Amendment and Medical Freedoms Resolution and expresses its intent to uphold the First Amendment and other clearly established rights of the people of Powhatan County, Virginia. The Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its intent that no Powhatan County funds will be used to restrict the First Amendment and other clearly established rights of the people of Powhatan County, and that no county fund shall be expended to aid federal or state agencies in the restriction of said rights. No Powhatan County employees, government funds, resources, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers, or offices may be used for the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe on the Bill of Rights and other clearly established rights of the people. The Powhatan County Board of Supervisors supports local law enforcement, who supports the clearly established rights of the people and requests its sheriff to not assist any state law enforcement officer, state health agent, or federal agent attempting to enforce an unconstitutional order. Powhatan County employees may not assist in or promote the enforcement, any executive orders that purport to limit or direct the free exercise of religion, peaceable assembly, free engagement in commerce, free movement of persons, nor any other individual liberty recognized as belonging to the people. That the Powhatan Board of Supervisors hereby declares its intent to oppose any infringement on the right of law-abiding citizens to preserve the right to decline medical products based on religious beliefs using such legal means as may be expedient. I took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the Constitution of Virginia. I will reaffirm it with my yes vote on this. I will tell you now that the reaffirmation of our oath that we took is simply what this is stating. Madam Chair, I'd like to make this in the form of a motion.
Thank you, sir. I will second that, and that opens it for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I do believe and support the Constitution and all the associated amendments that go with it, as well as the state constitution. I also support medical choice, whether it be for the vaccine or any other medical choice for that matter. I think this resolution is looking at us trying to interpret constitutionality versus non-constitutionality. And that's not a job, in my belief, that we're going, that we should be involved with. And that is a piece for the court to decide. So that's my position on that.
Thank you, Sis. Please hold your comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Byerly, this is not your resolution. Where did it come from? Didn't come from the people. Where did it come from?
I have no comment.
People have indicated that they're concerned about their rights being taken from them. Right to choose whether they have a vaccine or not have a vaccine. Is that a problem? There's questions, Byerly.
I stand by what the resolution says.
Please hold your applause.
On my slide, the Religious Exemption Administration. First of all, if you don't want a vaccine, you don't have to have one. It's your choice. At the height of the pandemic, the governor did not force you to have a vaccine shot. This is administrative code. This is exemptions from immunization requirements for students. If you don't want your child to have a vaccine, this is your pathway. This reaffirms that religion protects you.
Please hold your comments.
So, in fact, you don't have to have a vaccine, neither do your child. You don't. This is a resolution in search of a problem. And it doesn't answer the problem. Byerly, one more time. This says that we will not use any funds for unconstitutional practices. Who decides whether it's constitutional or not?
No comment.
Keep your comments, guys. No comments, no comments. This is dialogue for us up here. Please, please, please. Mr. Cooby. Yeah, that's okay. Okay. Any other dialogue?
No, not at this point.
Okay.
Or maybe I should say no comment. That seems to be the appropriate thing.
Any other comments or deliberation? If not, we can vote on this.
I'm sure I have some questions. Now, like this, anybody who wants to answer this, they can answer it. Because always before any vote, I try to understand what I'm doing. I think that's important. And what I'm not doing. I've had phone call conversations as recently as today. Where I had a lady call me, she was worried about her son-in-law. And he has a job. And right now, his employer is requiring a vaccine proof that he's had the COVID vaccination as a condition for continuing his appointment. She wanted me to pass this resolution tonight because in her mind, that would address her problem. It doesn't. And my goal as an elected official has always been to be honest with you. It's never changed. My goal as an elected official, just like when I took the oath, when we were sworn in to uphold and defend the Constitution. I can't carry forward any unconstitutional order, and I can't support any unconstitutional law because I took an oath that I believe in. That hadn't changed, nor will it ever change as long as I'm in this seat. So when I ask questions about what this does, it's so that you will be informed about what it does and doesn't do, and I'll be informed as well. And Mr. Byerly, you said you took out the executive orders, but I do see here under the clauses, you know, following the resolve, it says, "Executive orders that purport to limit or direct free exercise of religion, peaceful assembly, free engagement in commerce, free movement of persons, nor any other individual liberty recognized as belonging to the people." Says Powhatan County employees will not assist in those efforts. So I'm not sure what this means. Are we, you know, because when I look at the heading on this resolution, it says First Amendment and Medical Freedom Resolution. And then when I start with the whereas is, it's about religion under the First Amendment and the protections for religion. Now, talking to attorneys that I know, we already have common law which protects you from any requirement for receiving medical assistance. You have that protection today. And going back to what Bill said, if you go look into Dakota, Virginia, we have exemptions for medical and for religion, for vaccinations. You know, I remembered, you know, back, you know, when I went to start at school, you had to have the scab for smallpox. You had your polio. We pretty much wiped out polio, didn't we? Pretty much, you know. It's back, you know. I heard somebody in the audience, you know. But we don't want to go through that. I've got, you know, classmates I went through elementary school with that contracted polio. So I don't know, you know, Mr. Byerly, you're right. I don't know when my engine's gonna blow up, or I don't know what executive order I'm gonna get from, whether it's from an executive order from the president. Is it gonna be an executive order from the governor? Is it gonna be an executive order from a state or federal agency? But I can tell you, I'm not going forward with, you know, the carrying forward of any unconstitutional law or order. That's not gonna happen. Again, I took an oath.
Please, hold your comments, hold your comments.
So going back to the resolution, I'm not sure, you know, what the resolution. It seems to be a lot of things that we are concerned about in this county. And I share those concerns. I do. But I want to make sure that you understand when we say we're gonna use or weaponize the county employees, or we're going to use legal means, that going back to the situation with the lady that had her son-in-law's job in jeopardy because he hadn't had his vaccination, and employer was requiring that. If we went back to that, like with the governor did the first time, if we went back to that, how effective could I be in resolving that situation using the tools that are delineated in this resolution, giving you the impression that I can, you know, use the power of the purse, county employees, and other things to successfully remediate that? I can't. And what I can do is I can work, you know, with my elected officials down at the General Assembly and up in Washington. And I can, you know.
Please, 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 hold your comments.
And I can work with them to bring about a change. You know, elections have consequences.
Guys, comment.
So if we don't like what we have got today, it has to change.
Is that it?
I'm trying to, Madam Chair. So I'm trying to, you know, if any one of the board members wants to jump in and say again, if this doesn't do anything, this is all a gesture. I'm not, you know, I would like to do something substantive. I would like to do something that make a difference and that gives some people some real confidence that we have a real plan in place where we want to do something to counteract what's going on today. That's my comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up with that briefly. We just passed a resolution for Curtin Ellis. That was symbolic, did not do anything? No, it sent a message. It sent the message to the people in the audience and to the citizens of Powhatan County that we thank them for our service. It's a resolution. All it is, is affirming our commitment to the First Amendment and medical freedom. That's what it is. I am perfectly content supporting it. I say we, if there's no other dialogue, let's call for the vote and move on.
Well, let me follow up, Madam Chair. When we passed the resolution for Curtin Ellis, we didn't go out there and delineate the things that we were gonna do if we gave him a resolution. Big difference. This delineates things that we are going to do. Okay? And if we're not gonna do them, take them out. Okay? Don't give people a false expectation that we're gonna do something.
I don't believe most people have a false expectation. I think they understand.
The ladies and the people I've talked to today, they do, they're looking for relief through this resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chairman. Yes, sir. Guys, hang on, hang on.
Let's go back to what this requires us to do, the things that Mr. Williams was talking about. Who is going to decide when it is unconstitutional? Are you? It's a question. Who's going to do it?
Mr. Cox, I don't have to answer to you. I answer to the citizens of Powhatan County.
It's a question. If we're going to enforce this, how are we going to enforce it?
Mr. Cox, this is a symbolic gesture for the fourth time.
Not when it lays out. Not when it lays out.
Mr. Lachney, would you care to weigh in? He's like, no, but. Can you help delineate? What is this resolution?
I made myself some notes because I was thinking I would be asked that. It's an aspirational statement of support of the rights of the citizens of Powhatan. It doesn't, it doesn't actually support to do anything. The first paragraph declares that we're supporter of the First Amendment. Second paragraph expresses an intent that no First Amendment rights be restricted, that federal money and state agencies don't be. So it's a statement of expression of intent. So there's no enforcement or anything behind that. Number three, we do say that no Powhatan County employees, government funds, et cetera, may be used for the purpose of enforcing laws that are unconstitutional. Well, that's the law. So we're just saying we'll follow the law. Number four, supports local law enforcement, statement of support. Number five, may not assist or promote the enforcement of any executive order that limits free speech. Again, that's just the law. And number six is a declaration of intent. So I call it an aspirational statement of support of the rights of the.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Lachney, there are things in here that are against the law. Correct?
What I'm saying is.
No, but I mean, you just said that as you went through the executive order, that was against the law. Okay, thank you.
No, that's not what it said.
Thank you.
Okay. As long as we're clear, it's not what it says.
Okay, hold your comments, hold your comments. Any other dialogue?
So Tom, if this is all aspirational, it says that, you know, we're going to do these things, but it's aspirational.
That's what I'm trying to point. We don't technically say we're gonna do anything. We declare our statements of intent, our statements of support of the First Amendment. There's no, we ask the sheriff not to participate if something's unconstitutional. But there's no, there's nothing in the six resolutions or the six paragraphs of the resolution of anything that we say we're actually going to do that anybody could act on tomorrow. There's nothing anybody could go act on because, again, they're statements of support. They're aspirational in nature.
But they're aspirational in nature, and I'm gonna disagree with you here slightly because we're doing this for reason. When you go through the whereas is, you're building to some logical reason for action. And each one of these six operational clauses, they stand alone, or should, as statements about what we're gonna do. If you go out there and look in any professional organization or any legislative body, they'll have a place on their website that says, "How do you do a resolution?" And that's pretty much uniform, how the heading, the whereas is, and the operational clauses all have to work together. If we're gonna have an aspirational document, then title it. Title it, you know, "Aspirations for Powhatan County Going Forward."
I didn't create the document. I didn't create the title, sir.
Because the continuity of the title with the whereas is, they're supposed to be building to a logical conclusion for action. Then I get to the six operational clauses, which do contain the actions, although I'm not sure they stand independently by themselves as they should. Then what are we doing? What are we doing? You know, I was commending Curtin Ellis for a job well done. That wasn't aspirational, and that meant something.
All right, I would, any other dialogue? If not, it's been a second. This is a roll call.
No. Well, wait a minute. What is the motion, please, ma'am?
To approve the resolution. He has made it, I seconded, we had dialogue.
A while.
Okay, no worries.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
No. No.
Mr. Cox?
No. Yes.
All right. All right, moving on to the next subject. Guys, please keep your comments to a minimum. We gotta move on. Old business?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
What? I have no deputies, David. What do you want me to do? I'm telling you. Yeah, I mean, do you see them?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next section is, what happens, Allison Oliver come up and do a presentation for ordinance zero.
Ned, we'll take a five-minute recess. Meeting? All right, first order, order, old business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've got, Allison Oliver.
If you guys could please take your conversation outside, that would be great. So we can get moving. We have a long agenda left. Let's go.
Ordinance zero dash, excuse me, oh, dash 2021 dash 09, case 21 dash 04 dash R E Z, James A. Summerall, the third rezoning of Tax Map Parcel.
Hey, guys, please go outside, just right outside the doors, if you could, that group in the back. If you could head out, that would be great, so we can resume. All right.
Tax Map Parcel eight dash eighty-three, which is 4.7 acres from General Commercial C to Crossroads C R, District V, Smith's Crossroads, Pineville, Tobacawville. Ms. Oliver, if you could proceed with some information, thank you.
Sure. So this is a request by James Edgar Summerall III to rezone Tax Map Parcel eight dash eighty-three, which is also known or identified by 4050 Maidens Road, from the General Commercial zoning district with proffered conditions to the Crossroads zoning district. The applicant is making this request because they intend to use the property to operate an automotive wrecker service, which is a conditional use in the crossroad zoning district. So this request is being submitted in tandem with another request, which is case number 21 dash O1 dash C U P, which will be discussed in the public hearing portion, to allow an automotive wrecker service on that property. These two requests were both heard by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request and the conditional use permit request with the 18 conditions that are listed in your staff report. This was heard at the last, or at the, sorry, not the last, but the May Board of Supervisors meeting. So the conditions have been redlined just to reflect the changes that have been made since that meeting. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a modification to the local intersection spacing requirements that are set forth in the Powhatan County subdivision ordinance. Based on the roadway classification and the posted speed limit of US 522 or Maidens Road, the minimum intersection spacing required by the code would be 625 feet. The applicant is proposing that the future commercial entrance to the subject property be located at the existing northernmost entrance to the site, which is approximately 545 feet from the intersection of Maidens Road and Old River Trail. This was heard by, this waiver request was heard by the Planning Commission, and they recommended approval. Staff also recommends approval of this request because it aligns with recommendations that were provided to us by VDOT, and it would minimize the number of entrances to the site.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't know if the applicant is on the Zoom, but I don't think the applicant is present here tonight.
All right, that sounds good. So we have two cases here that kind of concatenate together. The one is for the rezoning and the other is for a conditional use permit. Do you want to discuss the rezoning or kind of do it together? How would you all like to proceed? We do have to have a public hearing on the conditional use permit still? But I would.
Don't you have to have the rezoning first? Because the conditional use permit wouldn't exist without the rezoning.
It's not exactly the case in this case. The reason being, Mr. Lachney, you probably can explain it better than I can.
Yeah, I was asked to look at this today and probably could have been done a little bit better, but the reality is the application, which is on page 108, is an application for conditional use permit. It actually identifies the current zoning as C. Our C district allows a wrecker service by conditional use permit. So technically, he didn't have to have a rezoning to be able to apply for a C U P in the C district. Now, the only question Mr. Cox raises is, in on page 116, the actual ordinance itself advertised, it, it has in the first wheress clause, request the conditional use permit, C U P, to permit an automotive wrecker service in the crossroad zoning district. But it doesn't actually have that in to therefore be it ordained nowhere in the, in the findings. So the simple wheress clause, I don't think nullifies the advertisement because the public was put on notice that he was trying to get a wrecker service C U P here. So I think technically, we need to consider the C U P.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Lachney. It's a transition district. There are restrictions in transition districts in terms of greater intensity, are there not?
There are restrictions, but we still allow conditional use permits on wrecker services, yes, sir.
It's about intensity, not about conditional use. This is a much more intense and involved use than is permitted. Is that allowed by the, by the zoning ordinance? That's the question.
I'll have to look. I don't recall the zoning ordinance saying no because it would be in conflict with itself. If it says in one section you can't, it says in the.
No, you don't have an automatic right, is what it says. It says, okay.
Conditional use, exactly. You have to meet the conditions that.
Well, no, it doesn't mean that you can go, for instance, in, in A10, you can go everywhere from agriculture to a asphalt plant, and one is clearly much more intense than the other. So you have different levels of intensity in any zoning district. And the transition district was not, was created not to allow for increases in intensity, but to force them to be rezoned to the proper district.
Well, I'm looking at the section 83380, General Commercial District, C District. Purpose of the General Commercial C District is to accommodate general commercial development on a land previously zoned general commercial until such time as the land is rezoned to a district designed to achieve a type of urban development called for by the land use designation supplied to the land by the comprehensive plan. No additional lands shall be rezoned to General Commercial District except to accommodate modest expansion of existing development on land zoned general commercial. I don't see.
You need to go to the section which introduces transition districts and explains what we're trying to do with transition districts for all of them.
The point I'm making is the law, the specific always trumps the general. And the specific is we allow wrecker, automotive wrecker service.
As a condition.
So our intent has nothing to do with.
Well, when the specific allowance is that you can get a C U P in a C district, that's the specific language that we've accepted. We adopted it and said you can apply for a wrecker service in a C district.
Okay, let's, let's proceed. Why don't we have?
I'm sorry, so what are we going to do now?
Let's do this. Why don't we have the public hearing on the conditional use permit? Because that would be for either crossroads or for the general commercial. So that being said, we will now have the public hearing for the conditional use permit for the tow truck service. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No ma'am.
That being said, I will close the public hearing. Now, now that the public hearing's done for both, we'll have the dialogue of what we want to do with this case.
I have a question for Ms. Oliver. Let's go back to your last statements talking about the Planning Commission voted for the waiver. The Planning Commission did not vote for the waiver.
The Planning Commission made a recommendation on the waiver.
The plant, what was presented by staff was that, was that the entrance was already established by a prior zoning. And so the question was never raised. And I raised the issue and said you couldn't do that. So the Planning Commission did not have a chance to address that.
We went back to the Planning Commission in July, and the Planning Commission, it was an agenda item on the Planning Commission to look at the waiver request because of the comments that were made at the May Planning Commission meeting or Board of Supervisors meeting here.
What brought this forward? Why is all of this going on all of a sudden? Mr. Summerall has been operating for a while, has he not?
So I think he was operating in the past, he came in for a business license in the last few years and we did not sign that business license because it's not a permitted use. We told him that when he's ready, he can come forward and request a conditional use permit. When he was ready, he came to us, we recommended rezoning to crossroads and also obtaining the conditional use permit at that time.
Could I have my slide that says bumpus towing mailbox? Don't go anywhere, please.
Okay.
Mr. Summerall bought this property in two thousand and fourteen.
Any other dialogue while we're waiting to pull this up? I have some comments afterward, I'll.
Do you have the two thousand seventeen aerial? Could you blow that up so that we see the property for twenty fifty maidens road, which is in your lower left hand corner? Now, this is our two thousand seventeen aerial. And you see his records, okay, so he's operating, you see his records and you see cars in the other building. What we apparently have lost was his mailbox, which he had created, that says bumpus towing, twenty fifty, forty fifty maidens road that was done in December of two thousand and fourteen. So he's been operating a long time, so the question is, what brought him to us now?
Correct, so he came in a few years ago and it wasn't twenty fourteen, it was probably twenty eighteen.
Well, he, but.
For a business license, at that time, we did not approve the business license. Then he came forward and asked for home occupation just to have a clerical office out of the neighboring property. That was signed, but he was informed that he was not legally allowed to operate that tow business there at that time and he would have to come forward with the conditional use permit.
But he's had a towing business since at least two thousand and fifteen and he's never had a, had a business license, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know, I don't have access to all the records. I just know when the one that came to us for us to sign was, and we did not approve that.
So the point, point is, he's been operating quite some time without permission or without the proper zoning in the county.
Here's where I'm at. Bottom line, it's a business that's been existing, he hasn't gotten any notification from the county that he shouldn't be doing business, I followed up with that today. We have never sent him a notice of violation, we haven't ever sent him anything. It was a use that was historically loud, allowed in general commercial. Speaking from, living literally across the street from him, I've never, never noticed business there one way or the other. It's been a very, very minimal impact in the entire time I've lived at my house. And the way I look at it, we deny it, and what do we get? Nothing, we're going to get a decaying building that's going to absolutely turn into nothing. Or if we approve it, we have eighteen conditions, six of which are, you know, regulatory on every C U P pretty much. Five of the remaining call for property improvements. Furthermore, if we don't like his, the way he's operating his business, on one condition, we can revoke his entire C U P. So to me, I don't really understand really the benefit of denying it. What do we get for it? There's no neighbor opposition, in fact, the Michaux St. James Foundation is in support of it. That's, that's where I'm at, so. I'll be happy if you guys, if no other dialogue, we can move and go for the first rezoning.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
From the perspective of other businesses, have we had a, in, that are in a, that have been in similar situations? What has been the outcome from the long term? Did they comply with those conditional, those conditions? Or did we have to go back after the fact and further correct them to notice of violations? And if we had to move with, toward the notice of violation, did we have to go beyond that notice violation? Does anyone know that?
No. True play, no.
I'm not aware of it.
Okay, any other dialogue? It's not, let's wrap this one up. I have, I move, we approve, let me just make sure that this is, we have to do the rezoning first, so let me go to that. This is my district, so I move, we approve case two one zero four R E Z. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? We need to do a roll call, Mr. Smither?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
No.
Mr. Berry.
No.
Mr. Cox.
No.
Mr. Barley.
Yes.
Ms. Comett.
Yes. All right, moving on to the second conditional use permit. I move, we approve case two one zero one C U P. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Can you please do the roll?
Mr. Williams.
No.
Mr. Berry.
No.
Mr. Cox.
No.
Mr. Barley.
Yes.
Ms. Comett.
Yes. All right, moving on to the next agenda item.
Ms. Oliver, if you could proceed on with ordinance O dash twenty twenty one dash eighteen, please.
Okay, so this is a request by Timber, Timber Creek Building and Design LLC to rezone tax map parcels forty two dash fifty seven F and forty two dash sixty eight to the light industrial zoning district with proffered conditions. The subject properties are located in eastern Powhatan County along the north side of U S Route sixty, approximately five hundred feet east of Carter Galler Boulevard. The applicant plans to construct, construct office and warehouse space fronting along U S Route sixty with a self-service storage facility located to the rear. The applicant has volunteer early submitted six proffered conditions with this request, which address the proposed layout, perimeter buffering, future interparcels connectivity, and the architectural review process. On July sixth, the planning commission held a public hearing on this request where they voted to recommend approval of this request with one additional proffer, which was regarding the architectural standards and the review process. The planning commission requested that the applicant follow the same process that other commercial buildings would have to follow, which involves the development design pattern book process that goes before the planning commission and the elevations are reviewed by planning commission. That proffer, they agreed to it at the meeting and I've provided you guys all with a hard copy of that proffer tonight. The applicant is here, I don't, they do not have a presentation prepared, but they're available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, if the applicant does not care to make a statement, we will now have the public hearing on this before any conversation. If anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone on Zoom?
We do, we have one caller, phone ending in eight seven six four. If you could proceed forward if you call. You're on mute.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman of seventeen twenty seven Theresa Lane. I would like to ask that the Powhatan Board of Supervisors ask the developer to build a new bike path or a new section of sidewalk along the front of the property and propose road improvements along Route sixty and have the new sidewalk be set back at least twenty feet away from Route sixty because the, the argument I'm going to make is that the developer is planning to add a turn lane, he's planning to do road construction, add a turn lane to Route sixty, where he's going to bring in dirt and fill and he needs to include building a sidewalk or bike path along with the projects because the sidewalk or bike path, the fact the property is surrounded by undeveloped land, that this one little lone sidewalk might look like it's by itself now, but in about ten years, there'll be other developments and the sidewalk could quickly grow to provide a link between Holly Hill subdivision and the Walmart. But the fact the developer is going to do major road constr, is going to do large road construction on Route sixty, he should include building a sidewalk or bike path. And also, the sidewalk doesn't actually have to match Route sixty, it could always go, it could always go for the forest area down below where the creek is at. If it, if it, if the develop, if it costs too much to have it follow, be at the same level as Route sixty, the sidewalk, the bike path could always go down into the depression and then go back up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
No, thank you.
Okay, now discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Oliver. The front building. I thought our requirements for parking were on the side in the back and this is, if I'm, am I correct that the parking is going across the front of it?
Yeah, there's one row of parking across the front.
So why did we make that, am I correct that?
I would have to look, but I know we have different standards for industrial properties, so I'm not sure the parking in the rear and sides, I think that's specific to commercial, Brett. Do you, yeah, I'd have to look to be sure, but I think that's the case.
Well, I think we better look.
All right, I can look right now.
All right, while she's looking that up, any other questions?
Well, I have a question about, apparently, they, it looks like, I didn't watch the meeting, but it looks like the planning commission had to push to get the design book approved. And they've approved it for, if I read this correctly, for one of the two buildings on the front and sides. And it looks like the other, you know, from what I can see, because I'm looking at a flat image, so it's, okay, that the other building is also visible. And so the question is, why isn't it, both buildings are subject to the design book, that's.
That was the applicant's choice to proffer that, so they can speak to that.
I didn't know that was negotiable.
Um, it's, so, proffer is, because they're proffering it, there are separate standards for industrial properties, they're separate from the commercial design standards, which would normally have to go through the pattern book process. They're voluntarily, they would not have to do that as it stands, they're offering.
Because it's light industrial.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we took them out, yeah.
Got it.
Um, while she's looking that up, for light industrial, we did classic granted, do they have any parking in front? Because that'll answer a question right now.
I don't think so.
Although the back is, the front is commercial and the back is industrial, so take that back. I was just trying to think, weight pack was in, that was a, this is, I'm just trying to help move along.
Okay, I can answer your question in just a second. Yeah, so the, the parking, the parking standard that's being referenced, that also is only applicable to institutional, commercial and mixed use development. That's one of those standards. Again, there are separate industrial development standards that don't include that parking requirement.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Cox, Mr. Barley, Mr. Berry, Mr. Williams, any other? If not, I think this is your district.
I'm sure I recommend approval of ordinance twenty dash twenty one dash eighteen.
Is that the right?
Twenty twenty one dash eighteen.
All right.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
All right, aye.
Oh, it's roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, roll call.
Mr. Williams.
All right.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Ms. Comett.
Aye.
Ms. Oliver, if you lead us into ordinance O dash twenty twenty one dash nineteen, Goodwin LLC.
All right, our next rezoning request is a rezoning request by Goodwin LLC to rezone tax map parcels twenty seven dash seven and twenty seven dash eight from Commerce Center to Agricultural Ten. The subject properties are located along U S Route sixty, northeast of its intersection with Skaggs Road. If approved, the applicant plans to market the property for single family residential use. The applicant has submitted with this request one voluntary proffer, which will require that the subject properties be combined within thirty days of approval of the rezoning. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of this request and at the July sixth meeting, the planning commission also recommended approval of the request. The applicant is also here tonight, if you have any questions.
All right, would the applicant care to make a statement?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, county attorney and members of staff, I'm Doug Bradbury from Powhatan, representing Goodwin LLC tonight. We have a very favorable recommendation from the staff and the planning commission. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to respond to any. But I do want to call your attention to one thing and I did email each of you and called you all and a good amount of response from you. All right, on page one sixty four, I'm going to reference you to that, I'll give you a minute to get to that particular spot. Are we there?
Yep.
All right, under the staff report there, it's got staff recommendations, come down to like the fourth bullet point there and it basically states that the property is not really adequately suited for commercial use. And that's their point on this particular request. The property is, the topography is so rough and it's bisected in, in both directions, two different directions, with a stream running through it, but the topography is very severe and it just does not lend itself to place a large footprint building on it along with the associated parking lots and all the other requirements. So that's the driving force for this request. If you got any questions, I'll be happy to try to respond.
Thank you, sir. We'll now have the public hearing on this case, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Evening, David Anderson, twenty three sixty six Bell Press Circle in Powhatan. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the landowners to the two parcels directly west of the subject property. I just got two quick comments. The first comment is that we believe strongly in individual property rights and we believe that Mr. Goodwin has the right to change the zoning so the property can move from a commercial use to a residential use. Secondly, we believe in transparency so that folks can make fully informed decisions. And I'd just like to state for the record that the property owners of those two parcels just to the west, we fully intend to develop those parcels for commercial use and we'd just like for any future residential neighbor to be aware of that fact.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear.
Okay, any discussion on this case?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bradbury. Mr. Bradbury, yo, Mr. Bradbury, thank you.
Pardon me, hey, I'm going to, before you, if y'all could speak directly into your microphones, the aging process has got its detriment, you know.
I'm very familiar with the aging process, yes, sir.
So if you speak directly into your microphones, I might can respond a little better.
All right, I'm familiar with the basic topography and the problems facing sixty of the, of the property that's adjacent to sixty. So you turn this into one lot. Where would the driveway go?
The only place that the driveway can go is on the extreme eastern property line of the property. So as you face the property from Route sixty, the extreme right, close to where the foul tile used to be and there's a house that sort of sits upon the hill above it, but it would be on the extreme eastern property line.
So you're proposing the driveway would come into sixty?
Oh, yeah.
Why can't it go the other way? To the cul-de-sac?
We, they don't own the property all the way to the cul-de-sac.
I'm sorry?
They do not own the property all the way to the cul-de-sac. So you, you'd be, we'd be crossing someone else's property. There's a lot that's in Branchway Springs and you get, there's a cul-de-sac and lots are all the way around the cul-de-sac. So we don't, the Goodwin LLC does not own that property at this point.
I don't know. Ms. Barley, this is your district. I have some concern, I have two concerns. One point that Mr. Anderson just made about, we don't know what kind of development will take place next door and another driveway on sixty. So I, I need, I need some help from my peers here.
Do you guys have any other questions? Comments?
Mr. Cox, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Bradbury, if I understand you correctly, you don't own access to any type of road that's off of Route sixty where you could attach a driveway to, is that correct?
That's very correct, because we have searched diligently. I personally wanted the whole property, even looking to see if we could figure some way to get through it back, but there is a significantly large stream that, that crosses on the back portion of this property, you know, that, and that's the cost issue in itself, but they don't, they don't own the property all the way to that cul-de-sac.
So once again, there's no way you can connect to a road that comes off of Route sixty that exists today? That exists today, there's no road that exists today other than Route sixty that you can connect to?
That's correct.
Okay. Madam Chair, he's entitled to an entrance off of Route sixty in that case.
If you, let me, see if I can flip, go to page one seventy-four, please. You could, if you're there now, this, that shows enough where the cul-de-sac is, and you can see the two lots directly behind this property that, that actually joined the cul-de-sac and it touched the back of this property. So there is no other access to this property.
That's it, thank you.
I wish it was.
That's all my questions, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Lackney. This is a two-step process, Mr. Lackney, where they want us to change this.
Speak, speak into your microphone, please.
Say again?
Say, speak into your microphone.
Sorry, a two-step, a two-step process where they want us to rezone two parcels to A-ten and they're non-conforming size-wise, but then thereafter, they would combine them. Is, can we do that, is that backwards? How, how does that work?
No, if we have a, if we have a proffer from them that they will combine, then we could undo the zoning if they didn't comply with.
Okay, so, and.
And I think it is an offer of proffer.
I don't, do we have a proffer for that?
Yeah, we do. That's the proffer you have, we combine any two parcels, and for a little clarity purposes, it says it'll be done within thirty days, I can submit the plat to you in thirty days, whether or not it will be combined, it's not in my court, that's, involves county assistance and progression through the normal bureaucratic process that you got to go through. So we'll submit the plat within thirty days, and then Powhatan County can decide how long it takes after that.
But if they don't comply with the proffer, we would undo the.
Right. I'm sorry, I'm fine, I'm having.
And we would be reasonable, as Powhatan County, not to subject them to have it within thirty days, because I hear clearly what you're saying in terms of you don't control the court records.
Well, is that a problem? We, I don't know, we'll, we'll do our part.
Right, yes, yes. He has to create the plat, and then our departments have to stamp it, approve, meeting all the necessary requirements.
Where is, where is the proffer? I can't find.
Stand up, let me look it up, please.
I saw, I saw the intent, but I didn't see a proffer.
Page one sixty-nine in the digital agenda package, I assume it's the same one.
One sixty-nine?
Yeah, it's correct, page one sixty-nine is.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Byerly, this is your district, would you care to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would. I would like to make a motion that we approve case twenty-one zero-six dash R E Z C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Roll call, Mr. Smither.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, last case of the evening.
All right, case number twenty-one dash oh-five dash C U P is a request by Alexia Yellis to permit an accessory dwelling unit detached within the rural residential zoning district. The subject parcels consist of three point oh-three acres and it's loc, or the subject parcel, excuse me, and is located at two thousand and two Walnut Tree Court in the Walnut Creek subdivision. If approved, the applicant plans to construct a seven hundred and four square foot accessory dwelling unit on the subject property. At the Planning Commission meeting on July sixth, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this request with the eight conditions that are listed in the staff report. These conditions address the location of the proposed accessory dwelling unit as well as access, vegetative buffering, and architectural design. The applicant is not present with us tonight, but I do believe she is attending via Zoom, so I don't know if she wants to raise her hand so we know who she is, whether that's Mr. or Mrs. Yellis.
Mr. Mrs. Who?
Yellis.
I see a phone number I don't recognize, but I don't see the.
I was gonna say, if, Mr. or Mrs. Yellis, if you are attending and you would like to speak, could you raise your hand? I spoke with them before and they said they were going to be on the Zoom.
Okay, yeah. All right, if they care to make a statement.
They did raise their hand, that number I mentioned.
Okay, perfect, then if you could let them speak.
Phone number ending in one five nine six, if you could please speak and unmute your, your phone, thank you. You're still muted. Phone number one five nine six, there you go, you're ready, thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Would you care to make a statement regarding your application?
Um.
You don't have to say anything, don't worry, if you, if you don't want to.
No, yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm okay.
I do believe, Mrs. Yellis, sorry for me speaking for you, but I know we discussed you had some concerns about the condition that there could only be one driveway, this would be a time to, to discuss that if you'd like.
Yes, when, it was approved in regards to building the seven hundred and four sque, um, square foot home, but we had to use the existing driveway, and if we put it on the east side of our house using the existing driveway, it just wouldn't work with putting my parents in there and the way they would have to walk all the way around, and we wouldn't be able to extend it on the backside of our house. So we were kind of at the point where, well, if we can't do a separate driveway for them, then we were thinking to put it on the other side of my property to actually use my existing driveway. But we just didn't know how that, that, that goes, if it's something that we have to reapply or you have to vote on. Of course, we'd be in the stipulations of being off so many feet of our neighbors on that side, but again, we just didn't know where, where we wanted to go at this time. But we do know that with the existing drive, not being able to use the existing driveway, it just was, is not going to be more effective for, for them in the use that we needed it to be, if that makes sense.
So, and just to provide a little clarity, on page one ninety-nine of your packet, there's a plat that shows the proposed dwelling. I think we have a condition, it's condition number, condition number five just requires that the accessory dwelling unit be located to the north of the existing dwelling, we don't say specifically outside of that where it needs to be. She originally wanted it to the northeast as it's shown on that plat, but now that we're requiring only that she use the existing driveway, I think originally she thought she could build a driveway onto Walnut Tree Drive. Now that we're requiring one driveway from Walnut Tree Court, she's just going to want to move that dwelling unit kind of more behind that pool area on the northwest, and wanted to make sure that was known at this meeting. I don't think that changes our condition, because we just say to the north of the dwelling since the dwelling's kind of positioned strangely.
And it's going to have to meet all the setbacks and everything anyway, so.
Correct, yeah, okay. So I, staff has no problem with that, we just wanted to make sure that was.
Okay, thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have the public hearing on this case. Anyone wish you to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And no one on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, open this up for questions or any kind of conversation. This is, if no one has anything, this is my district, I'm comfortable with keeping the condition of one driveway. I move we approve ordinance zero dash, oh, actually, oh dash two zero two one dash two oh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Madam Chair, do we have to amend the conditions, the north?
That she was saying we didn't, because it was general in nature, so that's what she, okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll now move to our second public comment period. Anyone wish you to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Don Silverbaugh, fourteen twenty-six Donovan Mill Lane, Powhatan, Virginia. I'd like to address the vote on the medical freedom resolution. Failure to pass this resolution sends a clear message to the citizens of Powhatan County that certain members of this board are not concerned about their freedom, the rule of law, or the future of this county. Leading is hard, particularly in a county of thirty thousand residents, following is easy. You don't have to take risks, as others have done that for you. What people need right now is leadership, a team who will take the arrows, act in their behalf, and have their back. You failed. Tonight, Mr. Williams and Mr. Cox, you could have stood tall, but you did not, you took the easy way out. Mr. Cox, I worked for six months on your campaign with the idea that you were going to stand up and be a leader. I was wrong, that will not happen again. You and I had a heated conversation on the phone about six months ago, where I said you had a very difficult time dealing with things outside your comfort zone. You proved me right this evening. Mr. Williams, you stated, and I'm going to paraphrase, that you already made your commitments to the Constitution, to the Code of Virginia and so on, and that you didn't need to reaffirm that. Let's take a look and do a parallel, I'm going to do a parallel to a marriage. People state their vows when they get married, and sometimes during that marriage, they reaffirm their vows. That's what you were asked to do tonight. You failed. You made a marriage with the four years to this, to this county and the people in your district, you didn't do it. So, come November, this board is going to flip. I will do everything in my power to make sure that Mr. Cox and Mr. Williams, you become the minority vote on this board. Thank you.
Sorry, you need to do your address.
Two nine four zero Lake Louise Drive. First, you know, I didn't prepare on CRT for once, I don't know how much more proof we need to provide from Mr. Williams' V I C, I thought, joint meeting and what the Powhatan Conservative Coalition dropped last week, it's pretty black and white. And I didn't know, again, it was going to be a tack on Mr. Byerly, Mr. Byerly is my supervisor, and I thank you for bringing this forward tonight and for opening the eyes on CRT, and I do feel like you are listening to your constituents, and I'm one of them, and I asked you for this medical freedom many months ago, and I do thank you for bringing it forward. I'm very disappointed tonight. I have lived in every district except for Madam Chairs, and I do own property in your I didn't live in one and four very long, I've been in three since twenty sixteen and feel very represented. Mr. Berry, I grew up in District Two, I've spent over my, half my life there, it's my heart, it's where I belong, it's where I'm building my forever home on my family's farm, it's my family, my family friends, my friends, my neighbors. You did not speak for us tonight, you really, I know this is a short-term appointment, you really need to get out and listen to the community. I'm very disappointed, very disappointed altogether. I do thank you for all that you do, because I do know it's been a rough couple months, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michelle Ward, nineteen twenty-five Hickory Shade Drive. I just want to express my disappointment in the board as far as the overall vote of denying Mr. Byerly's recommendation and support by Mrs. Carmack as well. Thank you, Mrs. Carmack, Mr. Byerly, for taking a stand and listening to the people of Powhatan County. My district two, oh my word, I will have to recap what the lady in front of me just said, Terry Stratton, was you were to represent Powhatan citizens, District Two. Every single one of those persons that spoke up in here tonight that live in your district asked you for this support, and you didn't do that. So yes, it's a short term, but you should have recused yourself from the vote if you were not able to speak and vote for those people. So, needless to say, you won't run again, but you're still a neighbor in the community. But people will remember what you stood for, and that was not to support our individual constitutional rights. You have to remember, when the government takes a little piece of your life, they're not going to give it back to you. They will not give it back to you, and they will take it one piece at a time. For twenty-seven years, when we vote you guys in, twenty-seven years that I've been here, when we vote y'all in, and we appoint school board officers and you guys, or we vote for y'all in here, we ask you to speak for us, and it's been very quiet for years because people haven't paid attention. And that's why when I spoke earlier, I said, we have been awoken, and we, we have been So everyone is, the pressure is not going away, we want our community, we want to love people, we want to support people, but we also want our individual rights, and we want people to be able to support that for us. And everybody makes mistakes, but you know what? The glory is not to thee, the glory is to we. And for people to sit here and pick apart other board members, what they may say or write or present, because either A, it didn't come from them, or B, there's a personality conflict, that's childish. Grow up and do what your people want. Mr. Cox, I've been friends with you in India for many, many, many years, I'm just, I'm just appalled, I'm appalled that you guys just make up this stuff as you go along to try and make an excuse as to not to do what is right. So, we'll see you next time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Sarah Taylor, twenty-nine eighty-seven Huguenot Trail. I think that you can kind of feel the disappointment in the room tonight, and this was an opportunity where the people of Powhatan had gone to their representative, Mr. Byerly, and he's my District Three representative, and we had expressed our concern, and this was an opportunity for you all to stand with the community, they showed up in force tonight, and it's disappointing that you chose yourselves over your voters, and it shows. And I think we've kind of seen across the board with school board and board of supervisors, you know, there's, there's a little bit of distrust when it comes to our elected officials, and I think that this just kind of separated. I feel that board of supervisors has, has worked hard to be transparent, but this is a big step back, because this is something that the community was really passionate about, and we showed up and we were, you know, asking this of you, and to vote it down just, just shows true colors. On another note, I'm going to go back and re-watch, but on the, the man who had the towing business that's been operating, I'm a little kind of thrown back that we would not give him the ability to continue operating, that's someone's business. So I don't know, you know, in a time where it's not easy to be a business owner and someone that has been operating for years, why we would take that away from that individual, I don't know them, I'm just kind of piecing together what I heard, quickly voted down, but I'd be a little ashamed of that as well, but thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Dee Strickland, I live at twenty-nine twenty-one Deer Creek Trail, Powhatan. It's become clear that we have two revolutionary, forward-thinking supervisors and three old-order good old boys, whose goal is to lead our county and take a step back. In a day when true. In a day when true conservatives are urging all patriots to get involved at the local level, Mr. Cox, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Berry were just exposed for what they really are. Shame on all three of you. Mr. Williams, what was the Boston Tea Party? It was symbolic. It was a symbolic act by true patriots to express how they felt about government tyranny. That's exactly what it was. What happens if our Democratic State Senators pass a law that does away with our religious rights for vaccines or anything else? They seem to be on a trend with passing all kinds of crazy laws these days. You should be ashamed of yourselves for taking matters into your own hands without listening to any of your constituents. Thank you for exposing your true colors.
Thank you, ma'am.
David Anderson, 2366 Belcrus Circle, Powhatan. I'd like to somewhat echo one of the previous speakers, and they were talking about the Wrecker Service case, and I don't have any dog in this fight either, but I'm just going to throw out a suggestion for you. It just struck me a little bit that the staff recommended the approval, the planning commission recommended approval, and the board denied the request. I fully understand you don't have to follow the advice of staff or the planning commission. Like I said, I understand that, but I did go back and think a little bit about over a year ago, Mr. Barley was in a meeting, I think it was a joint meeting with the planning commission and the board, and he said, "We have to search for ways to say yes more easily to rezoning cases into business." And my suggestion would be, and you may already do this, but I'll just go ahead and throw it out, is it may be useful to periodically go back and look at the cases that come before you, and line up where the staff is, where the planning commission is, and where you are. And if there is a disconnect, at least ask some questions about why there is a disconnect between how we vote. And it may be very valid reasons, but at least you need to ask the question, in my view, because it may give you some insight into how the business community feels when, when they go to the staff and the staff says yes, they go to the planning commission, and the planning commission says yes, and then they get to the final step after they've invested their time, energy, and money into a particular project, and they hear the word no. And is there a way that, as Mr. Barley said, we can learn to say yes by working with the business community? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here or anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear.
Zoom is clear, and I see no one else, so I will close the second public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments.
County administrator comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have some good news tonight. A few months ago, Representative Van Berger approached her constituent counties in the 7th Congressional District, which includes Powhatan, Amelia, Culpeper, Gushland, Louisa, Nottaway, Orange, and parts of Enrico, Chesterfield, and Spotsylvania. She was looking for potential projects in the federal government's new community project funding program. She received applications from each county and was charged with recommending just 10 grants to be considered from her district against all other 435 special districts. Consistent with the board's strategic plan, we submitted grant application to fund a new trail that will run from our middle school to Fighting Creek Park. I'll show you that drawing. I've seen it on here, but I'll go on about it. This morning, we were notified that a grant application had been chosen for funding in the full amount for $150,000, a little over $150,000. The following pic, the pictures I was going to show you, show the trail coming from the Fighting Creek, from Fighting Creek Park over to the middle school, and it's once approved and once it becomes law, we should get funding for that grant in October of this year.
Awesome. Great news. Cool, cool. All right. Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Smither?
Thank you.
Okay. Board comments? I have none. None. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I do.
All right.
I would like to thank the people of Powhatan who came out this evening and spoke. It spoke with passion and told your stories individually. And when you talk about a good night in Powhatan, every night I'm here is a good night. Every day I'm here is a good day. I've lived here a long time, and this is the place where people want to come. They move here, and they're moving here rapidly. And all I'm going to do is I'm going to continue to stand with you all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. We will now move to a, our closed session. We have to read your little.
Right.
Yeah.
Whereas the board of supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion consideration interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body with respect to the county administrator and county attorney. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose where discussion open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body with respect to convenience center. And whereas pursuant to sections 2.237, 11A1, and A3 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the board of supervisors of Powhatan County, as hereby authorized discussion of four state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So, moved.
Second.
We have two motions we need to make. Your first thing?
Well, Tom. I'll take this now.
Take us out of closed session, please.
Okay, all ready? Were the only matters discussed in the closed session public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such matters as were disclosed in the motion by which the closed session would convene were heard or discussed in the closed session. We need the roll call vote.
Mr. Williams.
All right. Mr. Mr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye. We need to make two motions. I will make the first motion to increase the county administrators salary by 5%. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Is this does this need to be a roll call?
No.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second motion, I move we increase the county attorney's contract by $14,000. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, that is. Meeting adjourned.